Welcome everyone to the Richmond Planning Commission Meeting of September 20th, 2023. It looks like we have a couple of guests, so welcome to you as well as the commissioners who are here. We'll just take a quick look at the agenda and see if any adjustments need to be made to it. Basically, our first item is number five. We're going to talk about the residential uses in the industrial commercial district. Then number six. Okay, good. Well, we had just a momentary pause. That's okay. So those are the two main things. If we get further than that, that'll be great. We'll talk about our draft definitions that we've put together. We've been working on revisions to the parking table, the height draft, and other business. It was an ambitious agenda, so we may not get past five and six, but if we get through those, we'll be doing pretty well. Anybody want to make any changes to the agenda? Okay, hearing none, we will continue with that agenda as written. And see if there are any public comments on things that are not on the agenda. So that would be Lisa and Michelle. If you want to make any changes, or do you want to make any comments to things that aren't on the agenda? This would be a good time to do it. For some reason, we have a screen share, but that's okay. All right, not hearing any public comments on non-agenda items, we will proceed to our number four, which is a review of the minutes of our September 6th meeting. Anyone have any corrections, additions, things they want to say about the minutes from our last meeting two weeks ago? Okay, hearing none, we will accept those minutes into the record as written. And we'll proceed on with our first real agenda item, number five. Residential uses in the industrial commercial district. So I'm hoping that you have all looked at this material, but just a really quick recap of what we're trying to do here. We are trying to combine the following projects. One is to allow some additional residential uses that are desired by residents of this district in areas that are not particularly suitable for commercial uses while at the same time not opening up the whole of this district to residential uses, which some members of the commission feel might allow the whole thing to become residential and take away any commercial space that we have available, small amount of commercial slash industrial space that we have in Richmond. So we're trying to balance those two needs. It wasn't totally popular to just allow residential uses in this district. We were not able to just spot zone the Donovan's lot to allow residential uses. So what is being presented tonight is a different approach, a slightly different approach using the PUD procedure. So in the PUD section of our zoning, section 512, a residential PUD is allowed in the IC district. So theoretically, the Donovan's could apply to use the PUD procedure to add an additional residence. However, the way that it is written in the industrial commercial district's own section is a PUD if no subdivision is proposed. Well, in this case, a subdivision is proposed. So that's the problem that we have there. We actually have kind of an internal inconsistency among the PUD process, between the PUD process and the district itself. In the district, the IC district, there are no allowed dwelling uses listed. The only allowed use that would be relevant here is number O as a conditional use which says PUD. So that's a use that's allowed. However, like I mentioned, that's if no subdivision is allowed. So the proposal tonight is to only allow a residential PUD in, on properties, on lots that already have residential uses on them. And only residential uses on them. So the Donovan's lot would qualify along with four other lots in this district. So it's like the lots that we were considering adding to the HDR district. Only what we've done with those five in total lots is we have made it possible for them to subdivide or not as they wish, but to use the PUD process to add additional residences. So what I thought we should do before we look at the actual language that we're proposing, and there's a nuance that we need to talk about, making it possible to have two different versions of the language. But what we need to do first is we need to get some opinions. What do you all think of this as a strategy? Of writing into the PUD section, basically that you can only put a residential PUD, which is listed as being allowed, but you can only put it in the IC district on those lots that already host residential uses and that don't host commercial uses and that are not undeveloped. And that are, you can't put a residential PUD on lots that are undeveloped or that have commercial uses on them already. So I'm opening the floor to people to have an opinion about this before we look at the actual language, which is not too difficult. You know, it's, there's not much of an amendment that has to be made to make this so.
So actually, Virginia, could you explain just a little bit what the intended effect of that would be of the proposed amendment?
Yeah. So the intended effect would be that on these five lots, and the lots that we're talking about are the Donovan's lot, which is 10 acres. The other three lots that are up there in the corner of the IC district that we had considered putting in the HDR, and the three acre lot that has a mobile home on it right now. Those, any of those five lots could put a residential PUD. And the residential, a residential PUD can involve a single lot, a single building, multiple buildings. They have to be all residences though. So it could involve any of those uses, different ownership, the same ownership, all residential uses. So that's, that's the intended effect. The intended effect is to allow those properties which are up there in the corner of the IC, the north, the northern corner, if you like, the northwest corner, to have some additional residential uses, but not open up the whole of the rest of the IC district to residences. Does that answer your question, Chris?
Yeah, yeah, I know. That's helpful. Thank you.
Yeah, it's similar in a way to moving the lots into the HDR, which was a strategy that we had thought of doing, but weren't able to do because one of the residential lots wanted to utilize some of the commercial uses. So if that lot, for instance, elected to utilize a commercial use on the lot, then they would then not be qualified to have a residential PUD. It's only lots that only have a residential use already on it that would qualify to have a residential PUD. Mark?
Hey there. Yeah, that sounds brilliant. Love it. That answers everybody's questions. It resolves the issues of commercial property being reverted to, converted to residential property. It's, all of that makes a lot of sense. And along that vein, is it possible for us to basically use that same language to just allow subdivision of a residential property? Or does it have to go through the PUD process? Because that's, that is not.
Well, the PUD process does involve a DRB hearing and decision. So it is not exactly like we are just saying, this is a permitted use. You can do it. You can get your permit from the zoning administrator. Your home free. So I will say that about this process, but in reading over what is required for a PUD application, it doesn't seem like it's terribly burdensome, that it seems like it's quite possible. You do have to have the DRB hearing. You know, there's this vague master plan statement, but the way it is being interpreted by our zoning administrator is, hey, your master plan is just what you're planning for right now, and I can't read your mind. I don't know what's going on down the line. So the Donovan's master plan is going to be to subdivide off a lot for this residence of the Beals, and the rest is in the future. That's the master plan. I mean, you know, it's conceptual. So if the Donovan's want to have more of a master plan, like, all right, we're going to make these other four lots for these other offspring. And here, they're going to be here and here and here. You know, that's fine too, but as of right now, only this is planned. That is how this is being interpreted at the moment. So I think it's possible. It's quite doable. It's a little more complicated than conditional use, but not much.
So, right. So, but is there anything legalese wise that prohibits us from just saying residential lots can be subdivided, maybe even under conditional use? I mean, if it's something that is one less thing that they have to jump through a hoop for and still provides the protections of the commercial properties, oh, you know, I'm all, I'm all for it.
Keith, you want to address that?
I would say regardless, they're going to be going to the DRB. They'd have to go to the DRB for the subdivision if it was just a subdivision. So there is a little bit more of a step to the PUD aspect of it. We'll give you that. But you know, pretty much the documentation and the work that needs to be put into it is the same. It basically is. I mean, if you're going to do a subdivision, you're going to show where the house is going. If you're going to do a PUD, you're going to show where the house is going. Well, but you do have that, that one sticking thing there, and that's that master plan. And Virginia is right. The way Tyler interprets that is basically comes down to if you don't have a plan, that's your plan. So that's kind, that's kind of the way he's doing it there.
And what, what is good, I think, about this way of doing it is that it builds upon something that's already in stated in the PUD section. You can have a residential PUD in the IC. Why it was there, I don't know. It's in the commercial as well. The language is in those districts, not just in the PUD section, but the language supporting it is written right in those districts. So, you know, to me, that gives it a like, all right, you can do this, you know? So let's just fix the inconsistencies of the language.
So that's, if I could just make one clarification on this and then I'll shut up. Um, so the difference between the PUD and the standard conditional subdivision where you're going in front of the DRB anyways, which I think would be applicable for any residential development in these areas. Are there added expenses put on a PUD subdivision? Do you have to have engineering? Do you have to have engineering? Do you have to have a legally binding lawyer written requirements to satisfy that PUD application? Or is it similar to just a subdivision?
It's, it's all pretty much similar, Mark. It really is. And you, you don't necessarily need, need a, you do need, you do need a surveyor, obviously. You're going to need to draw a plaque and you're going to need to submit the plaque, you know, it's, but it's just, it's, it's under the guise of a PUD. It definitely is a workaround. I don't think there's any doubt about that, but it certainly is targeted to these Rogers Lane properties because they're the only ones that are residential in the area. And I think that protects all the other, other commercial areas in the town, to be honest with you. No, I mean, wouldn't we want to just have them come on in and do a, do an administrative subdivision? Then, you know, get a permit? Well, that would be the perfect way to do it where most towns actually allow that, but we don't. So.
So Keith, just to make sure I understand what you're saying. Is there a way to do what Mark is suggesting with just specifying that in this district subdivisions can be made for residential uses? I mean, I guess I don't quite understand what he's saying applies actually, but I just want to make sure that I have understood.
I guess you can. I mean, the road that we went down was the PUD road, you know, so this is how it's been fleshed out. I mean, if you want to go down the road where it's just a straight subdivision for those targeted parcels or parcels that currently have a residential use on them, I don't see why not, why we wouldn't go that way either. I mean, we could. We just haven't written it up that way. So we'd have to get it down on a piece of paper. It's, it's, it's pretty important to get those words down on the paper to see how it fits, you know? I don't think we went through that exercise, Virginia. I mean, we certainly went through the PUD exercise. So just conceptually, no, I, I don't, I don't, we just have to write it up and see what it looks like.
So you can make those kinds of distinctions in the subdivision process. You can make a distinction between this kind of lot and that kind of lot and this kind of use and that kind of use. I didn't.
I, I really don't know. I know that, that under the PUD guys and the PUD umbrella, it certainly seems to fit better. You know, that's, that's kind of the way I would approach this. I haven't given it much thought. Certainly can, can drill down into it a little bit more and, and do what the pros and the cons of each approach is. Now, but from a monetary point of view, I don't think that that's, and a timing point of view, I don't think that it's, it's much different than what we're dealing with.
Okay. Allison, you had a comment. Yes.
Yes. Am I coming through?
Yes, and you're here. It's so exciting. Yay.
I made it. Thank you, Keith, for sending me the link. I appreciate that a lot. I just wanted to say that when I saw this proposal, my automatic reaction was that this is a very ingenious solution to a really awkward problem that we can take care of the needs of people who are, it's sort of in the sense of being grandfathered. They're already there. Yet we aren't opening the door for everything to turn out like that because it's a little risky to do that. I think this is a good solution.
Great. All right. That sounds like a positive response. Let's see, we've got Adam. How about you? Do you have any thoughts about this?
Oh, no, I, I agree with both, I guess, Mark and Allison. It was kind of, you know, very, very carefully, and I I wasn't aware of the PUD process till this discussion was actually that straightforward in this instance. So yeah, I think it'll work well.
Okay. And Chris, do you have any other thoughts?
Oh, I like it.
Okay, that sounds good.
Yay.
All right. So it sounds like we're in general agreement about the general strategy.
Right.
So the reason that there are two sets of language is because of this nuance. What about non-residential PUDs? So PUD, do we want to allow in the whole of the IC district PUDs that have a commercial component and a residential component? So mixed use PUDs. These are not residential PUDs. Now they're PUDs. If so, for instance, Jay Hutchins, they want to put a new building, a new warehouse, and they want upstairs to have a few apartments. Do we want that or do we not want that? Because we can write it so that a PUD that involves a commercial, but also residential could, may or may not be allowed in the whole of the district. So that's why there's an alternate version of the language and we can look at it a little more closely if anybody wants to have a thought about that. And we could also allow it in the residential part, the part that we've already allowed a residential PUD. We could also allow a mixed use PUD or not, depending on whether we, you know, what we think is suitable. Mark?
There we go. Muted camera, whole nine yards. When the original rework zoning was put forth way back on 10 plus now, one of the caveats we put in, in this type of commercial PUD situation would be that the residential part of the commercial PUD would be second floor apartments over a gas station perhaps, or any really construction building and then apartments on the, on the first, on the second floor. Almost proposed. I don't know if any of that language ever made it in. I don't seem to recall that it did. Quick review to see if we did put that in there, but I, I love that idea too. That's also very functional. What I am worried about doing is PUD subdivision. All of a sudden, okay, we're going to take this commercial property and subdivide it, and these five other lots are going to be residential, and then those five other lots get to become then divisible residential lots down the road. So if we're going to do commercial slash residential, isn't the worst idea, but I'd kind of like to have some protection, protections to avoid the proliferation of subdivided properties. It's because if we are going to allow, right now, it sounds like we don't even have PUD subdivisible properties. I don't know if that, was that just for residential or was that for residential and commercial? PUDs weren't subdivided. Because I think it was, I think it was both, in which case that would be a little confusing, but if we could do it so that, I, I, because I do think that even a subdivision is, is, has a reasonable application in these districts. But I don't want to subdivide into separate, single-use residential properties.
Just, just. Well, I think if we don't allow dwelling as a use in the IC district, but we allow PUDs which have a commercial aspect to them, then you would only, you know, if you subdivided, let's say the Jay Hutchins lot, you could subdivide it into several lots, but each one could only have either a commercial use or a mixed use PUD. And in the PUD section, for instance, in the Village Commercial District, it does require that 50% of the gross, gross floor area must be in commercial use. So you could write that in by saying in the IC district, if you have a PUD, the ground floor must be commercial. Presumably, you could write that in, right into the PUD section in this place where we're writing that the residential PUD can only be in residential lots. So to me, and Keith, you can talk about this if you have anything to say about it. To me, you could write it into your PUD section that any PUD could have residential, but not on the ground floor, for instance, if you wanted to do that. I mean, you would want to allow PUDs that were all commercial in the IC district. I'm sure we would all agree that we would want that. The only question here is, do you want to allow ones that have, you know, like the, the big Spruce building, the restaurant, which has four apartments above it? Because PUDs with some commercial on the ground floor and residences are allowed, for instance, in the Village Downtown District and in Jolena Court, they're allowed. And they're required that you have to have commercial on the ground floor, residential on the upper floor.
Okay, I, I would say yes. We could write it in. That would be my only addition to that. I agree with you, Virginia, on that. I don't have my zoning book with me, unfortunately, but I know that it seems to be pretty protected in the sense of the commercials being on the ground floor. That's a requirement.
Yeah, well, it's, in the PUD section, there's a whole bunch of different requirements for the different districts. You know, we're just adding another one with these residential PUDs. But, you know, there's stuff about the Village Commercial. There's stuff about the VD District, about the JC District, Jolena Court District. You know, it seems like all these districts have had special parameters added.
But I, I don't, I don't believe, I don't believe that there is a prohibition on residential being located on the first floor. I know that, that, I know commercial must be on the ground floor. So I think that's what Mark's talking about. You want to have that, you don't have residential on the ground floor. You only have it on, on the, on the upper floors.
Yeah, well, that's what's written in for some of these other districts, like the Village Downtown District. PUD, you can only have commercial and Jolena Court, you can only have commercial on the first floor. And, but you can have residential on the upper floor. So I think in this case, we just have to decide if we want to allow residential at all
Right.
in the IC district. Allison?
Yes, um, before we get too embroiled in the minute details of, of this type of thing, and I'm not quarreling with any of it, I just want to make the remark that the pandemic has changed things so much that the difference between residential and commercial has blurred because so many people work from home. And they're, you know, they're involved in certain businesses, but they do their computer work at home and they are able to connect to offices outside of home. And I, I talked to a lot of people at the pool and, you know, I hear this consistently. This whole environment has changed a lot. And I, I just wanted to make that comment that I think we need to consider that in our conceptual planning of the whole idea.
And, you know, Allison, it's part of what is a little daunting about thinking about planning for commercial space. Is what is the future of commercial space? You know, who, who is going to be using this commercial space? It's not going to be, you know, the same. It's not going to be, you know, the same things that were used before necessarily.
No.
It'll, it'll be specialized and, you know, so it's difficult a little bit to conceive of what commercial space should look like.
Thank you, I, that's, that's just my concern before we get involved in too many details. I, I like the idea that, that you had proposed about, or whoever did that, um, that let's just, uh, let the people that already, uh, exist as a residence in a commercial area, let's them, let them remain and not damage them in any way, but, um, I think before we go too far in trying to define the details of some of this other stuff, I think we need to examine a little bit more about what is the direction of commercial and residential, and also, um, I'm, I, I'm just going to say this again, that I believe that the legislature is going to have to deal with, uh, this law that, that requires that people who have water and sewer, uh, in that, those districts, that they have to be able to have five subdivisions. Um, and there are some things that, that's oversimplified a problem, I think, and particularly given that, um, the legislature meets in Montpelier. I don't know if any of you have been to Montpelier lately. I grew up there, and I finally mustered up the courage to go there. Uh, I don't think that the Montpelier will ever be the same. Um, there are so many businesses that were damaged, and, you know, they got flooded in 2011, and now they're flooded again, and, and, uh, I think that, um, some of these traditions that we've developed, because, um, they made sense 10 years ago, uh, they may not make sense now. So, before we make too many drastic changes, I just wanted to put that thought forward.
Yeah, well, you know, luckily, we're not contemplating drastic changes here in this part, so we, you know, I think we can proceed ahead with, um, with the language because it's not, you know, it's not as many drastic changes as some of those other things that you're talking about, that we will also be dealing with, but.
Yeah, I, I agree. I just wanted to make that remark, so I compliment you on, all, all of you who thought this up, on this compromises, a good solution.
Good, all right. Did, Chris, did I hear you had something that you wanted to say?
I was mostly going to violently agree with Allison.
Thank you.
Okay, well, we have some challenging work ahead, clearly. Um, let's see, Michelle Beal, do you want to have anything to say about this? I think we, you did make some remarks about it last time, and we understand that it would be a lot easier and simpler if we just allowed residential uses in the district. That doesn't seem to be the way the commission is moving at this point, so this is an alternate route, anyway.
So, it's actually Zach here tonight, Michelle is.
Hello.
So, uh, at the risk of sharing a little too much, I've been listening to the meeting since you guys started and cleaning up a dog mess that I came home to.
Great.
It's been wonderful. I certainly have a healthier appreciation for what Michelle does in critical care. I did just want to ask, ask a clarifying question with, um, the path everybody apparently unanimously seemed to, uh, agree on, and that's just what, what would the changes look like moving forward if a residential PUD were to be allowed specifically on those lots where residential structures already exist?
Well, so let's take the Donovan's, your parent-in-law's lot. They have this 10-acre parcel, and plans have already been made to subdivide off one lot for you guys. So, what you would be applying for now would be a PUD to put, to subdivide one lot and to put one house on it. That would go through the D, the DRB, they would have a public hearing to see if anybody objected to it, you know, we can't do anything about that. You'd have to do that if it was a conditional use, you'd still have to go to the DRB or a subdivision. So, let's say that was approved, and your master plan, the Donovan's master plan showed their house, your house and lot, and then nine acres or whatever of undeveloped land. Let's say two years later, two years down the road, they wanted to put another lot, to subdivide off another lot. They would have to go to the DRB and amend their master plan, and they would amend it by saying, okay, now we have a new thought, and we're going to want to divide this new lot off and make another one-acre lot or two-acre lot. In this district, the minimum lot size is one acre, so theoretically, they could have nine lots. So, each time, if they only made a plan for one more lot, each time, they would have to go to the DRB and say, we would like to amend our master plan. Our master plan now involves another lot, or maybe they'd like to do two lots and get two kids out of the way at the same time. So, that would be what would happen. They would go to the DRB, they would apply to amend their master plan. It's still part of this residential PUD, which is allowed in this district on parcels that already have residential uses. Uh, and presumably, they would be allowed to put those other lots on. That's what it would look like. Does that help?
Yep, no, that's definitely helpful. I, that was my understanding from what I heard in the discussion you guys were having. I just wanted to make sure that when I repeat it, when, uh, when the boss of the house comes home, not getting anything too off-base, so thank you for clarifying that. Um, I don't think I have any other questions or any, certainly no comment, um, on anything further about those specific lots. Um, certainly heartened to see that there's such agreement for this moving forward, and I'm hoping that, uh, relatively soon, we can start, uh, contributing to the Richmond tax bill.
Okay, great, and good work with the dog mess, by the way.
Yes, thank you. Uh, I get a.
Michelle will like that.
Quite literal, clean, clean bill of approval when she comes in, it sounds like Febreeze as opposed to the, uh, alternative.
Right, very good.
Thank you so much.
Yep, and then what might happen in the other lots, that, since there are five lots that would be involved in this, um, you know, there's one that's three acres, for instance, so theoretically, they could subdivide that into another two one-acre lots as a residential PUD, or a duplex could be put on it, since, uh, it's one acre, the way it's written is a one-acre minimum lot size, which is a default of a density of three dwelling units per acre. So, some more residences could be placed on those lots, but only on those lots.
Perfect. That works for me.
All right, any other questions? Lisa, hello? You're muted, however, yes?
I'm unmuted. Um, just, just a, uh, for, to refresh my memory, I guess, um, can the PUD ever be reversed? I mean, once it's formed, or is this a permanent, uh, is it, it runs with the land, can't be undone?
Yeah, the, the approval with, with the land.
Okay, okay, so it's a forever, um, once it's done, it's done, it's, it's always.
Yeah, it's not like you have to re-up or, or, or do anything along those lines, yeah.
Okay, I mean, it just, it strikes me as almost, um, oddly, uh, uh, a parallel image. I'm thinking of the Goodwin Baker Building, which has commercial, would like to have some residential, and it's in a residential district, and here we have one that's, uh, in the industrial commercial district, it wants to have residential, and we're, we'll try to segue in some commercial to make it, you know, a little compatible with the existing IC district. It just seems like maybe there's a, uh, maybe there's an analogy that can be used for the Goodwin Baker Building, that's a different topic for a different day.
Right, well, we did take the Goodwin Baker Building and put it into a residential commercial district to allow there to be residences.
Oh, I must have missed that.
Along with the commercial use, so, because he definitely wanted the ability to have residential properties in there.
Hmm, okay, no, thank you.
Yeah. Okay, so, if we could just look at the plan for the language for number five, so you can see what's involved in changing this, which actually isn't much.
So.
No, we can hear you. Let's look at agenda item number five, which is your second bullet point.
Okay, because I have the third, the, the, the alternate one is, is on the bottom.
Yeah, well, if you want to put them both up, but put this one up to start with, let's look at this one first, so. So, this would all be an amendment to the zoning document that we would have to have a public hearing about. The Planning Commission would have a public hearing about this, we would take comments, we would forwardage the select board, just like we did with the other amendments that we've proposed, the RC districts, they would have their public hearing process. So, if we wanted to do this by itself, so that we could do it relatively quickly, this is what it would look like. So, in the industrial commercial district, as it is currently written, number 3.7, we would have to change letter O under conditional uses to remove the words "if no subdivision of land is proposed", so that it would just read, planned unit development as provided by section 512 is a conditional use in this district. So, that would be the first change, that would be the change we would make in the actual district itself. Then, in the Planned Unit Development Section, section 512, under 512.2, General Conditions A, we would be adding this statement. However, in the IC district, a residential PUD shall be allowed only on parcels that are occupied and solely occupied by a residence or residences as of the date that this is adopted. So, basically, that's saying the only lots that this occur, that this can be used are ones that already have a residence, but that only have a residence, so there's no commercial used on the lot already, and it has something on it, which is a residence. So, that's what that statement is saying. The shells and the maze is something Keith and I will be talking about, just the way those words are used, we need to think about exactly how the shells and the maze are used, but I don't think that makes any practical difference. Okay, so we come down to B, the other thing that we'd have to change in the PUD section. Um, and I'm not sure we even need to put this in, but it says basically that the dwelling types do not need to be listed as separate uses. They are assumed to be allowed, if you allow a residential PUD, you're going to have to assume that residences are allowed.
Right.
So, it just is pointing out the fact that you don't have to have the fact that dwellings are allowed as an actual listed use, because we assume that if you allow a residential PUD, you allow residences. So, and we, this will all have to be reviewed by legal as well, so we will want to make sure that we have the exact words, but this is what we're suggesting so far. So, if this would be if we didn't care about PUDs with commercial and residential uses, this would just strictly allow residential PUDs on those five lots and nowhere else in the district. It doesn't speak at all about mixed-use PUDs, it doesn't seem to allow them. To me, it doesn't seem like it is allowing any residential portion of a PUD in the IC district. If we want to allow that, we need to look at the language on the alternate version, which you could put up, Keith, which would allow you to have a mixed-use PUD anywhere in the IC district. Because you would have to list under 3.7 Industrial Commercial District, 3.7.2, you would have to put an H, that a dwelling unit as part of a PUD is in allowed use. So, it's just a nuance that Keith and I and the lawyer will have to be talking about a little bit to make sure that we capture whatever it is that we want to capture about mixed-use PUDs. The other language is going to be the same, you know, about the residential PUD only being allowed on residential lots. So, I just wanted to show you those things because it's in the details, but it does have a conceptual portion, which is whether or not we want to allow mixed-use PUDs. And if we come to some kind of conceptual agreement, then we will know how exactly we want to stru- structure the language. And also, in the alternate version, which allows PUDs which are mixed, you don't need that additional language down there in 512 to B, you don't need the language about assuming that a dwelling is there if you allow a residential, because you have dwelling unit as part of a PUD is listed as a use. So, people may or may not have any thoughts about this right now, it's a little complicated, and, you know, we will be working on the language, but it would be nice if we could move this along, and if we can decide on those things, then we can get the exact language down that we need and bring it to our next meeting. So, that's my goal with that, is to, it seems like everybody's okay with the residential PUD part of it on the residential lots, and now we just have to put this in there. Keith, I don't know if you have any thoughts about this, that, off the top of your head?
Uh, no, I, I, I understand where you're going with this, I just want to make sure that the, uh, commission is, is aware of what we're trying to do here, um, with this alternate version. I mean, if you have any questions, please, please state your piece at this point. They're basically putting that dwelling unit in there, which, a dwelling unit's a dwelling unit.
And it seems like if you list it as, only as part of a PUD, you're not allowing dwelling units in general in this district, which was not popular, but you are allowing it as part of a PUD.
I mean, personally, the alternate version is, is clearer to me now, uh, and it certainly would be when we're trying to administer it also. I think it's a little clearer for the layperson too, with the dwelling unit aspect of it.
Is that your second, uh, version here that you're talking about?
This is, yes.
Yeah, that, that you think that's clearer? I think clarity is important.
Yeah, I, I do, I mean, it's, it's, it's kind of, it's clear as mud, both of them. This one is just clear mud, for lack of a.
Yeah, uh.
So, I look at it in the lens of administering this. So I look at it in the lens of administering this, and that's that's kind of what I bring to the table here, and this would be the preferred one for us.
Oh, okay.
The other thing that to me is not exactly clear about the PUD section is the fact that it says a PUD may include any permitted or conditional uses. Now, to me, that doesn't exactly say that those are the only uses. It says it may include them. May it not include some other ones? Now, I assume that the way that this has been interpreted, Keith, you can correct me, is that those uses that are on the list are the only ones that can be included. But the language doesn't really say that, you know, what you should say if you want that to be true is the uses that shall be allowed are on the list of permitted and conditional uses, so. You know, I guess I would like to fix that by putting in the shells and the maze where they really should. Because if I were to read that and to say, well, you may take any use off the list, but then maybe you might take some other uses.
Yep.
So.
My only, if the shell is is a, and you know, it's an absolute, that's easy. May, that's squishy.
Yeah, but is it not the case that the way you would interpret this is the only uses you can use are the ones on the list?
That is correct, because those are the conditional uses or the permitted uses, that is correct, but if somebody coming along reading that, yeah, I mean, they could say, hey, wait, I want to use this use because it says may.
Right, so you have to be careful when you say may in these documents.
Yeah, we run across that often.
Um, we can, we can clean that up a tiny bit while we're doing it, so. All right, so any other questions or comments, or shall we try working, you know, shall we come with some like finished language for next time to try out on you people? If you want to have an opinion and email Keith about what it is, yes, you know, that would be great. Do you want to have these PUDs with residential uses in the IC or not? If we say, like, on the ground floor, you have to have commercial, or fifty percent of the space has to be commercial, or, I mean, it looks like we could say anything we want about it. So this is kind of related to Allison's question about what is commercial use going to look like, and, you know, should we be allowing residences upstairs from commercial uses? Maybe that's the way people are going to want to have things, I don't know. So anyway, if nobody has anything else to say right now, let's leave it like that, and we'll work on the language and get some legal opinions about all this and make sure it's okay. And let's go from there. All right. So that's good. That brings us to the village residential neighborhoods. Which hang on one second. I don't, I think that's. So, sorry, I thought it might be Joy trying to get a hold of me, but no, never mind. Okay, so everybody ready to move on to number six about the village residential neighborhoods? Yes?
Yeah.
Okay, all right, so um. Do you want to bring up draft fourteen Keith for the north neighborhood?
Give me one second.
Yep.
Anybody see this?
A little bigger, maybe? Yep. That's good. So where we are with this project is that we had three meetings of the planning commission where we talked in general about Act forty seven and how it was going to impact our zoning. The last one that we had at our last meeting, if you read the minutes, we had neighbors from both the north and the south making comments. And we were focusing more on those two neighborhoods, because this Act forty seven is all about areas that are served by water and sewer and that allow full-time residential use. So that's going to be the village residential neighborhoods, we're going to have to go back and look at our RC districts, Jalina Court, the downtown and the village. We may have to make some minor changes there, but they're not likely to be very many, because those districts are already denser. So the ones that we had been working on prior to Act forty seven were these two village residential neighborhoods, so we're trying to incorporate these changes into these neighborhoods. And we did hear from some of the neighbors, like I said. So this is the north district. And what's in black is what we had before Act forty seven came along, that we had been working on, we had talked to the neighbors, we had them come in. And what is in red is what we would be adding to language that we would be adding based on Act forty seven. And Allison, if the legislature changes it, well, we'll have to change it again, but for right now, we have to comply.
We have to go with what's there, I I understand that too.
The zoning administrator already has to administrate as of July first, according to Act forty seven, so we might as well have it in our zoning for right now. So we come down under features of the district. Three to four unit multifamily dwellings. We have to allow them, so that's going to be a feature like single-family homes, duplexes, accessory dwellings, and three to four unit multifamilies. They're going to have to be permitted uses. So in section three point eleven point two permitted uses, we have added dwelling, three to four units, multifamily. That seems pretty straightforward so far. We've come down to conditional uses. And this item D is probably the most controversial part of it, and this is not in Act forty seven. This is something that we arrived at for the RC districts. This is something that the, none of the people so far that we've talked to in either of these neighborhoods want in their neighborhoods, the two principal structures hosting residential uses. Keeping in mind that through the residential PUD process, you can have this. So it may be preferable to not put this in, Keith doesn't like it anyway, but and everybody else doesn't really like it, it was a way to have more housing allowed. And it seemed like it worked for the RC districts, maybe it is not necessary to put it in here since you could achieve the same result with the PUD process. So I'll just mention that as possibly yes or no. Okay, go, we go on a little further.
Can I ask you a question about that?
Sure, yes.
So when you see that it could be achieved with the PUD process, would, is that achievable for an individual lot through the PUD process?
Okay.
Because in the PUD process, you can have multiple buildings on the same lot, you can have subdivisions, you can have multiple owners. You can have multiple uses as long as they're listed on the use list. Now, there aren't any commercial uses listed, so we're talking about residential PUDs.
Okay.
But um. Yeah, you can, you know, if you have a three acre lot and a single-family home on it, and you want to put another single-family home or a duplex, as long as you meet all the parameters, the setbacks, the lot coverage, the density, you can have a PUD. You can make that lot into a PUD and put on it whatever you want, as long as it meets all the other parameters.
Okay, so this really doesn't change the allowable uses as far as residential buildings on on a lot in this in this district in in VRNN, correct?
Correct, I would say, what do you, would you say Keith? Is that correct?
Yes.
But what it does do is, it's it's a statement of policy essentially saying that like the other districts where this is explicitly applied, this is uh bringing the VRNN district more explicitly in line with the town plan, could one say that?
Um, I don't know, I mean, the town plan is not very specific on this issue. What it does do is it allows, the way I think of it is, it allows you to make a duplex that isn't connected.
Right.
So that's where we've had issues before, is people want to put two residences and they have to make them into a duplex, so they put a carport or something between them, or, you know. We haven't been very careful about defining what the difference is. Or if they want to put an ADU-like structure, but bigger, or that your mother-in-law is not going to live in, or so it just allows for those uses that have fairly narrow parameters to be expanded.
Yeah, I mean, I, the one thing that is good about this is is that you 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 can have a larger structure than what is allowed right now under the ADU, because that's top-down at what, a thousand square feet? Yeah, I think this kind of takes care of that, I just don't know what the consequences are, that's all.
And that, you know, there are other issues with the way the ADU is, and this could be approached by reformulating our ADU section, because with the ADU, the owner of the property has to own both of the structures and has to reside in one or the other of them. And if it's been a, you know, you have one year after the owner leaves for that to be okay, and then it's not okay if the owner moves out. Now, that's an administrative nightmare, you know, we're not going to go to people houses that have an ADU and say, so is your mother-in-law still living there, or whatever, you know, are you, have you moved to Florida, whatever? You know, it's, so the ADU parameters as were set up by the statute. Yeah, I can get that, um, the ADU was, it's very restrictive and kind of difficult to administrate, so it could possibly be fixed by maybe allowing a bigger ADU or no requirements about the owners, it's still the way it's defined in the statute is it only belongs to a single-family home, so we're keeping it there, but anyway.
Can I speak to this quick, Virginia?
Yeah, yeah.
I I'm a big fan of the two principal structures and encouraging that, just because Elise and I had a plan of living in what was a going to be an ADU, we would build the house later, and quickly became aware that a family of three is a stretch in an ADU, even of the maximum size, and four is an insurmountable challenge with two dogs. And so I think this gives a lot of leeway to, you know, have an ADU set up or have something resembling that and have some flexibility. I do think that loosening the actual language around ADUs, because there's such encouragement from the state, and there's so many, it's it's such a streamlined process that I actually think those restrictions are pretty decent on actual ADUs, but having a maybe more involved conditional use process to create something that resembles an ADU but has broader, you know, like, you know, more options is is a good, it kind of addresses both, there's more there's more review process if you want to not do an actual ADU, but you're more flexibility versus an ADU is a less review process right now, but you have more constraints put on it, so I think that having this language in there kind of gives us the opposite of the ADU process, not a streamlined, but more flexibility.
Yeah, I mean, I agree with that, I actually like the fact that there's this ADU that's really, you know, permitted, no questions asked, it doesn't even count as density. I like that, having that in there, and I like having the fact that you can have a duplex on this, if it's in the same building, you know, those are good and they're easy to do, so what you trade off, as Adam is saying, is some narrowness for the ease of the process and the acceptability of it, and this just takes you one one step further, where you do have to account for the greater density, it can be bigger, you have less parameters, you know, the duplex can be separated into two buildings, but there's a little more of a process. Go ahead, Adam, sorry.
Oh, sorry, I interrupted, into ADU requirements for occupancy, I was reading on the town just kind of, as we had talked about this last time that it come up, and and it doesn't even have to be the owner of the property, it has to be a a family member, and I, and how that was defined is like, it could be like a sibling. It could be anyone, so you could have a sibling, you know, if I was the property owner, I could have my, or Elise and I, my wife's sister could live there, and then some random person in one of the two units, so it's it's pretty loose, I I don't think loosening up the actual ADU definition at all really is beneficial, and it kind of would undermine the whole. Well, the size, the size might be worth exploring, but I don't know if there's state statute there that come into conflict.
No, you can increase the size, you certainly can.
And, you know, the the membership, the household the status may be somewhat loose, but it still suggests that someone should be monitoring it.
Yeah, there's some relationship there, there's some, it's not purely.
Keith is going to have to go and knock on the door, and is that really your brother, you know, or you know, I I just don't see that kind of happening. So, um, yeah, anyway, well, we can think about this, I will tell you that if we have it in there, I personally am also in favor of having it in there, but there will be some opposition to it. So, and it may be a place that we can.
What was the, what was the big opposition to it, just out of curiosity, I mean, I see a lot of benefits to it, and I can see some like some drawbacks, but I guess I don't, I see those as much. It's pretty insignificant, and I'm I'm sure other people disagree and have other you know, issues with it, I just, what was, what were people's issues with it previously, and what do we expect the issues to be?
Well, I think it's part of the overall objection to increasing density.
Ah, okay. I mean, this is, this doesn't, this doesn't do anything to increase density, that's I guess we know that mechanically it doesn't do anything to increase density, but it does change what density looks like from it can change what the density looks like quite a bit from a bunch of two and three unit buildings to something that more closely resembles single-family homes. I mean, I I see that as a benefit, this is a benefit relative to density, because density can increase without having multi-unit buildings and kind of maintaining a single-family home style.
Well, and again, it doesn't.
That was my take on it.
It doesn't force an increase in density either, you know, it just it means it 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 removes an impediment to people who would like to add additional housing.
Well, it does impact density in this way. If you have two single-family homes now on this property, as opposed to one duplex, each one of those single-family homes can have an ADU. So.
So if if both of those single-family homes are owner-occupied, then they could have an ADU.
Exactly. And because, because ADUs are exempt essentially from density.
So does that.
It does allow, you know, will allow another family to live there, so in reality, there is a density effect.
So how would, how would that be different? So if you to have two. To have two, two prints, two single family homes on one lot, you would need to have. Uh, whatever the, double the minimum. So you need to have point four acres. How, how would that be different from having two point two acre lots? That were owned separately. I guess I'm just not seeing how this actually increases. It doesn't increase the potential density. It just allows more flexibility for building placement while maintaining the same density. I think there's a, there's the perception this is going to allow a bunch of density increases, but the reality is this just allows flexibility within the constraints that are already established in small square.
Yep. Well, it may be an educational thing, you know, it, it is.
I know I'm talking to the more, uh, the more in tune people with this stuff. So it's kind of.
Right.
It's not.
It may be that we can be, and we know that we have some fans out there of this in the building world. So. You know, it may be if we. Do think it is a benefit, especially given the housing crisis. You know, if we think it is going to make it easier to have some more housing, then you know, maybe we need the educational work. But.
That would be, my hunch would be that we keep it in and we, we, we pitch the benefits of it, not because the. Not because there aren't, aren't drawbacks, but I think all the benefits are outweighed by the. Far outweigh the drawbacks. I mean, it doesn't. If we can explain that it doesn't actually increase the potential density, it just allows flexibility within the same. Without, within the density requirements that are already mandated elsewhere. Um, I think that, that's good if we can get more single family homes and such oriented places. That would be my. Um. Preferred approach, but I understand there might be pushback and this might not be the, this might not be the one thing we want to put all our effort into.
Right. And in the section that actually there, this. Multiple structures on a lot actually has its own verbiage that goes along with it. Which says that it has to abide by all the require, you know, the requirements, the density, the coverage, the setbacks, all of those things. The acreage, you have to have enough acreage for it. So it's not, as you say, really um, increasing the density, but the perception is there.
A lot of this uh, Act forty seven is a, there's a lot of changes, but more of it's perception thing, it seems like. From our perspective in this town, just because the changes are. Yeah. Yeah.
All right. So we'll leave it in there for the moment. So we come down to the next section. The next change is three point eleven point four. Which is an actual residential density section. And we have not had this before and in our, our C districts, we included density. Under dimensional requirements, which is not correct because often dimensional requirements are. Um, referred to in the state statute and density is not one of them. So we will at some point have to go back to our R C districts. And take density out of dimensional standards and put it in its own section like this. So. Anyway, and the. Act forty seven requires that you write bylaws that will allow a density of five units per acre. It doesn't say you have to say that you have a density of five units per acre, but you have to allow it. And so the option is to not have a maximum density. Or to have a maximum density, a density cap. And the um. People from the neighborhoods that we heard from were in favor of not only having. The um, minimum density be five units per acre, but also having that be the density cap. And Adam expressed last time that this was us trying to get away with the minimum. Um, which has, what has always kept housing back, but um. It's more. The density of five units per acre anyway is more than people in these neighborhoods had been expecting. So you know. There's pushback here. If we were to say, we recommend that there be no density cap, then we would have even more pushback. Um, so, uh, yeah.
I, I do regret my uh, I regret my wording of that. I, I did immediately, but I regret it more now after a week.
After we have it again. Yeah. Anyway, so the main thing that is required by Act forty seven. Is that your minimum lot size be a fifth of an acre. You have to have a minimum lot size of a fifth of an acre. If your bylaws are. Going to allow for five units per acre. Does everyone get that? Because. Yeah. People have suggested that even though you have a density of five units per acre, your minimum lot size can be bigger, but that is not. Right. It can't be bigger. Because every house has to have a fifth of an acre. So you have to have a minimum lot size of a fifth of an acre. All right, good. So that is going to have to go in there. Eighty seven twelve square feet. Is exactly a fifth of an acre. None of this like rounding off to eighty seven thousand. People prefer it to be exactly a fifth of an acre. And I guess, you know, that's. Fine. Why not? It was. Something that Revy felt planners were into was having these even numbers of square feet, but. I don't know. Doesn't seem to matter. Um, so. Then the lot frontage. I think we changed from seventy five to sixty feet. So there was some difference there because if you have a fifth of an acre. Seems like seventy five feet is a lot. So we made it a little bit shorter. I don't know if anybody has to say anything about that. Um. Maximum lot coverage fifty percent. We had already agreed with the neighbors about that, that, you know, fifty percent was. Where we needed to go increased from what we previously had of like four percent. Setbacks. Front yard fifteen feet, side yard ten feet, rear yard fifteen feet. Those are. I forget exactly. Um, what the change would be from the H D R because this neighborhood. The village residential neighborhood north is coming out of the H D R. So we'd have to see what the H D R had. I think those setbacks are just a little bit smaller. Than the H D R. Um. And then. So I don't know if anybody has any comments about any of those dimensional requirement. Let's see, yeah, lot frontage in the H D R was seventy five feet. We went down to sixty because the lots were so much smaller. The lot coverage was forty percent and we went up to fifty percent. To allow for a little bit more housing. Um, twenty feet was the front yard setback. We went to fifteen. Side was ten, rear was fifteen. So. Not much change there. Then we added. Anybody have a comment there? Nope. Okay. Um, we went to add some district. Specific development standards and we started to do this with the R C districts and we would like to have in each district. Any specific standards that relate to that district, just that district. Um, in this district, all lots shall be served by municipal water and sewer. Well, we know that. Then. A two is about sidewalks and, you know, this is. Tentative. I don't even know if this language is legal, but this was in. Put in in reference to comments that the neighbors made specifically in the others district, the south district. About if you're going to increase density, you need to have sidewalks. And the language that we had originally had in there said. You'll put in sidewalks if it's feasible. And the comments that I heard. From neighbors in writing was that, that's not good enough that you just have to have more sidewalks. So I don't know. Um, I put this in and I have no idea if it's possible or legal. Keith, you can. Make some comment about it.
Yeah, I mean typically, um, this would be a requirement for subdivisions um, in more urban areas. Well, this is, is the urban area of the town. So. I'm not sure how it works in Vermont uh, with, with sidewalks. Maybe there's something in some statute that says something, but that's something that Dave would have to suss out. Uh, but I guess the first thing is, is does the commission want to entertain this?
Yeah. So that's a question. I mean, the. The other option is not saying anything about sidewalks or about saying. Put a man if it's feasible. So, um. Which is not, you know, there's no teeth there and everybody's going to say, well, it's not really feasible. So I don't, and if we had an official map, this was the point of having an official map that we talked about. With Revy a few times, an official map. Lays out where the infrastructure is going to be, where the sidewalks are going to be, and this binds. Uh, developers to having to put in those sidewalks if they're shown on the official map. Well, we don't have an official map. It, you know, it's not going to be soon that the planning commission gets to make an official map. So. Uh, can we put this language in? I don't know. Well, how do people feel about sidewalks? I mean, basically this just says if there's a sidewalk that ends next to the property that you're developing. Then you have to extend that sidewalk. If there isn't, you have to give the town an easement to put a sidewalk in at some future date.
Seems reasonable.
Yeah, I mean, it seemed kind of reasonable, but I don't know.
Costs money.
Yes. And it excludes single family homes. I think I put in or one duplex because. That seemed reasonable. Um, but anyway, people should think about this. It's, we might not be able to. Have a comment about it right at this moment, but you know, this is going to be something that will come up. Uh, about sidewalks. So. I don't know how to, how to think about it too much myself. Um, site design standards, parking at the side or the building. Or the rear of the building, if possible. Well, you know, we already have a lot of places where. The parking is already in the front in these neighborhoods. So I'm not sure if you can. Just require it without this if possible. Maybe for new buildings. I don't know. What do you think, Keith?
Yeah, I, I, uh, if, if possible. Uh, one person's possible is another's, another person's impossible. Yeah, again, the, the zoning term is squishy.
Yes. So if we leave it out and just say parking shall be located at the side or the rear of the building. You know, I mean, we're already faced with, since we now are going to be allowing five units per acre. People are gonna, and only fifty percent of lot coverage, it's going to be hard to get this parking in, in some places.
Yeah.
So it seems like. You might want to give people an out for parking in the side or the rear. Anyway, it's something that everybody should think about. We're not going to be able to have time to come to any conclusion tonight, but. All of this stuff in red is stuff that we're going to have to think about. Do we want it in there or do we not want it in there? Landscaping and screening so that there's no dumpsters in the front yard. We particularly don't want that. Um, front yard should be vegetated and trees are encouraged. You know, you don't want to require them necessarily. And then we get to what is required by Act forty seven, the residential parking. The minimum parking requirement is one space per dwelling unit. Because we talked last time about taking all the residential parking numbers out of the parking table that is only for commercial. Each district is going to have its own residential parking. Requirement. And since everything here is water and sewer, it's got to be one. If this is what is decided is correct. So. Um, okay, is that it? What's anything left else? The additional multifamily housing standards, we have had to add into this district because. We now are allowing three and four unit buildings, so. They need to abide by the multifamily housing standards. Here's the. Parameters for the multiple structures on a lot. If we're going to leave that in there, we're going to have to leave these parameters in here. And the reason the parameters are in each district is because when we started to put. This language into our, our C districts. We only wanted it to apply to those districts where we had actually talked about it. So for right now, it's going to have to be in every district where we have. This as an allowed use. Eventually, it may be a freestanding section on its own that the, this, all of this language doesn't have to appear in each district. I don't know if that's clear, but for right now, it. Is going to be in each one of the districts. So it was complicated to get to that point. Um, traffic impact, we took out traffic impact because Chris Cole said that. There was no way any single one of these tiny little lots was going to generate enough traffic to have any impact. Obviously, it'll all be cumulative, but you can't blame that on any one person. So. That's why we took out traffic impact. And then. P U D section says. And you notice it's not listed as a use because it was not really correct the way it is in our current. Zoning document where P U D is a use. It's not a use, it's a process. So. Um, but we are saying that residential P U Ds are allowed. So anyway, so those are just some thing to think about. And in the other district, the Vermont, the um, residential district south. Pretty much the same changes are in there. In fact, I've been wondering whether they shouldn't just be one district. Because, you know, originally we had different minimum lot sizes in the south neighborhood. We had a half acre lot sizes. In the north district, we had quarter of an acre. Now we have both have. Fifth acre minimum lot sizes. So are there really that many differences that they need to be? Two separate districts? So that would be something.
Well, it certainly, certainly are geographically different. Um, I, I know that they're in separate portions of the town, but I mean, uh, geographically they're different. Um, and uh, I don't know what additional uses the committee would be considering. You know, for this part of the town. Um, I, I don't think you're considering commercial in here. Um, so I mean, that's just something to chew on would be. Uh, i- if you want to separate them out, I think it would be separated out based on the uses. Because you're right, everything's mandated that this is the size of a lot. This is how many, this is how many dwelling units you're allowed. Yeah, there, there's no change. It's served by water and sewer. Um, so it's the use tables that would dictate if you want a separate district.
And there aren't that many uses that are different. You know, like museum is in the south and is not in the north. Well, you know. Is that, is that a useful distinction? Not really.
Justify a, 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 a separate district. Yeah, I mean, the round church and all that. So.
Yeah. I mean, they are in different locations, but when you look at the actual language of the requirements. There just aren't that many things that are different about them. So um, that would be a question that people should think about. Do, if you put the language of these two next to each other. Is, are they the same enough that we just want to make it into one district? So anyway. All right. So any questions or comments about any of that, about these two districts that we would? like to finalize at some point? These have those few
Act forty seven.
Changes, the language has been added. So. And then a few other things have been added that we didn't really talk about with the neighbors, but. Okay. So people will look at this for next time, yes, hopefully, and see what you think about these issues. And when you're thinking about these issues, if you don't know whether you are for it or against it, try to figure out what information would help you to make that decision. Cause eventually we're going to have to make a decision about each, each line of this, these requirements. So if it's hard to figure out, try to figure out what will help you um, to come to some kind of conclusion about it. Okay. Great. Well, we have a few minutes. We could look at our definitions. Do you want to put the definitions up there? And what I'm hoping for is that we get the Rogers Lane amendments done shortly, quickly, and just present them to the select board. Just have our public hearings, present them to the select boards on their own. And then for our next round, we do the neighborhoods, these definitions that we have to add, the new height section, you know, those I think that we should not try to do all those together with the Rogers Lane. I don't know if people have a different opinion about that, but it would be nice if we could get the Rogers Lane squared away and just let people concentrate on that and get those hearings out of the way. Anyway, so definitions with the next round. Residential density and next meeting, we'll probably have the whole section that talks about residential density. But basically it just means how many dwelling units you have per amount of land. So this has got to go. Yeah, go ahead.
Yeah, we're, I mean, we're also working through, you know, exactly what is going to be applied in the density calculations to. I mean, that, that still hasn't been satisfied to everybody's satisfaction. Cause I know that you have, um, you have things out to Jacob on the ADUs, which I think we pretty much answered that, uh, that one.
Yes. Jacob answered my question about ADUs. ADUs are exempt from residential density, basically. So a house with an ADU, a house without an ADU is still one unit of dwelling. So that is not a legal opinion, but that's from ACCD and they have legal people. So I'm assuming that that is correct. Duplexes, however, are subject to density. That is the ACCD position on that. If there is a density number listed in your ordinance, duplexes are subject to it. So if you have a lot that's a fifth of an acre and you have a house, you cannot turn it into a duplex because it exceeds the density of five units per acre. But you can put an ADU on it because it's exempt. So go figure. Um, okay. Affordable housing units, and this is for the future. When we have affordable housing, if we're going to have more affordable housing built, this defines what an affordable housing unit is, what an affordable housing development is. And so Keith and I worked on these together. If anyone has any comments as you read over them, you should let Keith know. Duplex. There's a couple of slight variations, but they're not that different. And then public parking, you know, because we're going to have to have a public parking definition if we reference public parking in our document as at least suggested by Act forty seven. Um, and so this is basically what we came up with, that the parking spaces have to be marked and that they have to be year round. Uh, and they have to be available to the public. So, um, we
So I worked on that just a little bit more, um, as you could see, to strengthen it, uh, basically. Cause what, what the act is talking about is the 1.5 spaces requirement, a quarter mile away, yada, yada, on that. Um, and that is a residential use. So I just wanted to break that out to make sure that, that for the purposes of residential parking calculations, that the public parking must be maintained year round. If you're living in a residence year round, that, that parking needs to be maintained year round if you're going to utilize that.
And then the other thing that we haven't yet put in here that we should is that it has to be overnight. Right? Don't we have to have, I mean, that was another thing that was brought up was it has to be twenty-four hour parking. It can't just be like during the day. So I think we need to put that in there. So anyway, those are the definitions that we're working on. If anyone has any comments about them as you read them over, then be sure to let us know.
All right. I didn't even think of that overnight parking, you know, um, I, I don't think the legislature did either.
But don't, doesn't it seem like it would have to be that way?
Works. Yeah. I mean, you're not going to run out and move your car every twelve hours, you know, I, I.
Yeah, you might as well live in Brooklyn if you're going to do that, if you have to move it every, anyway. All right. So any comments about any of these definitions? We, they're being worked on under construction, not quite ready, but we'll.
Getting there.
Getting there and, um, please, uh, send Keith your comments. Just email him some thought about it if you have it. That would be great. And then we can move on to making a final version. And I think maybe that's about all we have time for tonight. We're going to leave the other things for next time because, uh, that's enough, I think.
Yeah, well, we do, we do have just an update. We do have, um, a presentation next meeting on affordable housing from the Jericho, town of Jericho's planning chair, uh, planning commission chair. And, uh, I think we've, we've given twenty minutes and then ten for questions at this point. So she's all set. Um, so that, that's just a quick update on what's coming up down the road.
And are we, are we leading with that next time, Keith?
Are we what?
Uh, leading in the agenda with that presentation.
Yeah, that should be first up.
Great, great. Thank you for handling all that. Appreciate it.
Not a problem.
And then, um, for the rest of that meeting, what I'd like to do is to finalize, if possible, the Rogers Lane material and set up a date for a public hearing for that.
When are you back in town, Virginia?
This Sunday.
So I'll see you some next week.
Yeah. So if anybody has any thoughts about the PUD question, not the residential PUD, I think we've got that okay. But the PUD question, whether we should allow residences in the rest of the district, as long as there's a commercial use as well. If you could let Keith know, that would be great because the sooner we can resolve that, then I think we can finalize the language.
Yeah, any, any and all questions, please don't hesitate.
Yes. Um, great. Okay. So if you want to stop the screen sharing, that's good. And that's probably all we'll have time to do next time, especially if we don't hear any comments about the PUD part. We'll have to talk about that. So, um, then we do have these couple of other things, uh, eventually that we can get to, which is the restructured height section to take Act forty seven into account. The residential density section and the revisions to the parking table, blah, blah, blah. So anyway, anybody have anything else they want to talk about right now or? I have one other thing, which is that the Richmond Land Trust has asked to talk to a couple of planning commissioners about the gateway and the water and sewer extension and that whole business. So, uh, I've asked Adam, I don't know, Adam, if you can, if you want to be a part of this or somebody else, they would like a couple of planning commissioners. And Keith, I hope we're going to bring along also.
Yeah, I saw your email this evening after work. Definitely interested. Um, I just got to talk to Elise this evening and see what days work, but, uh.
Okay. That would be great.
The twenty-sixth is not working for me. I have, I have a transportation committee meeting.
Okay.
So that's kind of off the table.
Okay. So we had the twenty-eighth and the twenty-ninth or some future time. But we should try to establish a time to talk to them about what the planning commission sees as the future of the gateway. So.
Prosperity.
All right. Lisa, yes.
Um, just a quick question, not to throw a bird in the saddle here, but has, has there been any progress on the short-term rental question? Um, I, I don't know where we stand. I haven't, I don't recall anything recently.
No, but I can tell you, I can tell you that the town of Burlington is being sued by the Short Term Rental Association there for their attempt to put in some regulations about short-term rental. They're currently being sued. So, yeah.
See how that plays out. Yeah. I mean,
We might want to see how that plays out because one of the main things that people are objecting, objecting to is the residency of the owner, the requirement. And this is something we have talked about here with short-term rentals is that maybe we should only allow it if the owner is in residence or the owner declares that as their principal residency, even if they're not in residence at the time of the rental. And this is one of the things that they're being sued about in Burlington.
Oh, boy.
So.
Well, yeah, it's, uh, let's let them take the heat for a change and see what happens.
Yes, we'll follow that.
There you go, Lisa.
Um, all right. So anybody else, motions to be made here?
Would like to move that we adjourned.
Great. Any seconds to that?
Got a second.
All right, Chris, seconded by Adam. Let's start with, is anyone opposed to adjourning? No, if I hear no voices opposed to adjourning, so we're going to consider ourselves adjourned. Thank you all for coming. And, um, yeah, we could make some progress, I think.
Yeah, no, thank you. I thought that was a good night tonight.
Yes. Great. Well, thanks, everybody. And, um, we'll see you on the fourth of October.
All right. Good night, everyone.
Yep. I know.